Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Tuesday, April 22, 2008 meeting, which is a special meeting of the Glendale City Council. Mr. City Clerk, could you please call a roll?
Council members Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Yusefian.
Here.
Mayor Drayman.
Here. Could we have the item, please, at...
Sure.
Actually, before we do that, let me go to the city manager, just for some housekeeping.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. We would like to take item, it's actually two on your agenda following roll call, Fire Department Overtime Staffing Report only, off calendar. We will reschedule that for the very near future.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. City Clerk, let's go on with item three, please.
With your permission, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to read the report into the record. The agenda for the April 22, 2008, special meeting of the Glendale City Council is posted on Thursday, April 17, 2008, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Item number three on this agenda, the city attorney regarding discussion of request, support the Korean-American Free Trade Agreement, CHORUS FTA. Item 3A is a resolution urging congressional support.
Okay. Thank you very much. Who is making the presentation, do we know?
Mayor, over here.
Yes, Mr. City Attorney.
It's my item. So, Mayor, members of council, back in January of 2008, the Korean-American Chamber of Commerce of Los Angeles submitted a request to then-Mayor Najarian, requesting that the city council consider supporting a resolution which would urge Congress to support ratification of what has come to be known as the CHORUS, or Korean-United States Free Trade Agreement. There are currently a number of free trade agreements in place between the United States and varying countries throughout the world. There are also a number of free trade agreements that are pending ratification before Congress, one of which is the Korean-American Free Trade Agreement, the other is Colombia, and the other is the country of Panama. There are a number of others that are awaiting implementation. As with, probably the best-known free trade agreement, and the one that created a significant amount of controversy back a number of years ago, was the North American Free Trade Agreement. As you know, the North American Free Trade Agreement was proposed to be extended to what is sometimes known as the FTAA, or the Free Trade Agreement of the Americas. This council, back in 2001, adopted a resolution opposing the extension of the North American Free Trade Agreement to the, what is called, the FTAA, primarily because of what some individuals and groups believed was a potential loss of sovereignty by local and state governments in the ability to regulate environmental and other land use matters. There have been a number of what are called expropriation cases that have been filed as a result of free trade agreements. Those expropriation agreements are made by "country investors," where they are attempting to, or have established, certain operations in countries with free trade agreements, whether it be in the United States, in Canada, or Mexico. Ultimately, because of local regulations, there is either a significant reduction, or in fact, a loss of the investment of that enterprise, and as a result, a claim is filed against the United States government. That claim then goes through an arbitration process that has been set up under the auspices of both the United Nations and, there's a couple of acronyms, for these entities that establish or have these arbitration tribunals. But suffice to state, one of the arguments is they're very private or not public. They usurp the right of not only local government, but also the courts of this country and other countries in making decisions, and as a result, creates outside, third-party, private reviews of these cases where compensation may or may not get paid. And I have a list of a number of those cases that have been adjudicated, mostly unfavorably to the companies bringing them, but some have been favorable, and there are still cases pending. As with many of these free trade agreements, those that have been adopted and ratified, and those that are pending, there are supporters and there are detractors. There are strong supporters of the Korean-American Free Trade Agreement. Korea is the seventh-largest trading partner in the United States. They generate tremendous amount of business. There's approximately $6 billion of export from the state of California to the Republic of South Korea. So there are strong supporters from the United States Chamber of Commerce, the U.S. Trade Representative, who negotiated the agreement, and a number of other trade associations, and agricultural concerns in particular, that support the agreement. The United Auto Workers, however, and the AFL-CIO, they oppose the agreement for varying reasons, in particular because of the potential, the implications it may have on the automobile, the sales of automobiles overseas. Currently, there's a significant imbalance in the sales of automobiles from the United States into South Korea, where South Korea enjoys a very hefty surplus in the sales of automobiles to the United States. So there are supporters, and there are detractors from these free trade agreements. Suffice to state, we're here now, before you, seeking your direction, and I have presented a resolution supporting the Korean-American Free Trade Agreement. Included in that resolution is some language, though, which I lifted from the July, or excuse me, the 2001 resolution, which essentially provides that this council supports Congress ratifying a Korean-United States Free Trade Agreement, while continuing to acknowledge the sovereignty and the police power of local agencies to enforce local land use and other state or local environmental regulations. Finally, and lastly, I should point out that there have been some speakers who have suggested that the Korean-American Free Trade Agreement has similar language, that, similar objectionable language on expropriation that NAFTA has, and to a great extent, that is correct. The language in Chapter 11 of the proposed Korean-American Free Trade Agreement mirrors the NAFTA agreement to a great extent. There is one significant difference, however, which I could not find, in the adopted and ratified NAFTA agreement, which is in the proposed Korean-American Free Trade Agreement, and that is some language about transparency. Under current NAFTA agreements, it is up to the United States, for example, if they're a party to any expropriation action, to make documents public at their discretion. Under the proposed language in the Korea-US Free Trade Agreement, under Article 11.21, it's actually a separate article, which is new, and specifically is titled Transparency of Arbitral Proceedings. All documents that are submitted to the arbitration tribunal would be made public upon submission, and the hearings would be open to the public, and ultimately determine whether a war should be made. That is a significant difference between that and NAFTA. With that, I can answer other questions. I provided you with a number of documents, some very short articles off the Internet, of some opposing and some supporting the Korean-American Free Trade Agreement, as well as the Congressional Services Report that's required by law, that's attached, and additional information. I have an additional stack of information here, read it all, I don't remember it all since March, but certainly can provide you with some additional information, should you desire.
Thank you very much. Let's see, let me just ask whether or not we, when we continued this, we did no business on this, correct?
That is correct.
We just continued.
Just continued. One last thing I should point out, it is in the staff report, but it probably bears repeating, that the County of Los Angeles did take action and adopted a motion supporting congressional ratification of the Free Trade Agreement, citing, among other things, a significant amount of trade that the state of California, and in particular, the ports in Los Angeles, do with the Republic of South Korea.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Yusefian.
Did the resolution include that section that ours does?
It did not.
Okay.
It did not. It was actually a motion directing, I believe it was the CAO, if I'm not mistaken, to write a letter to our congressional representatives supporting ratification.
And that section of the resolution is pretty much in the same spirit as what we passed in 2001?
It is, except in... It is, except in 2001, it was adopted as a resolution opposing extending NAFTA to the FTAA because of the expropriation language, and what was then developing at the time, the notion that it would be limiting our local land use authority, only to the extent that if we did something that a party to a free trade agreement found to be objectionable and claimed, then they could file a claim with the United States, they couldn't file a claim against the City of Glendale. The only claim they could file against the City of Glendale would be if we actually took the property under our constitution, either state or federal constitution. The claims under a free trade agreement go against the United States, they go to arbitration tribunal, and if they're able to satisfy the criteria under the agreement and under the rules of the tribunal, they can be, there can be a monetary award. The Meti Klat case is probably the most well-known, and that was the, as one speaker referred to as a toxic waste dump in a town in Mexico that was being set up, and ultimately, that was stopped, they couldn't do it. Local, I think, much if it was a local governor, or a local, I'll call him, for lack of a better word, a local legislator in a town in Mexico, began to do a number of things to stop that, and ultimately, about a $15 million award was granted under the expropriation provision. But again, that was between the federal government of Mexico and the United States.
All right. Mr. City Attorney, do we need a motion here in order to move forward?
There is a resolution before you at 3A urging congressional support, should you choose to act on it.
Looking for a motion.
Well, we do have speaker cards, and I assume there's going to be some debates, so...
Speakers.
If there is no, well, if there's no motion, then there's no second, then we don't need to move on to...
Do you need a motion before you can entertain the public?
No, it's not that we need one necessarily beforehand, but I'm asking for that because I think all of the debate is somewhat pointless if we don't have a motion in a second.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move 3A.
All right.
Second.
Okay. Thank you very much, appreciate that. I would like to, if you don't mind, I'd like to go to the public, and then our comments. All right. The first speaker is Chang Lee. Item 3, please.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor Drayman, and council members. Thank you for inviting me to speak on behalf of Korea-US Trade Agreement. I am President of the Korean-American Chamber of Commerce of Los Angeles. I represent 750,000 Korean-Americans in Los Angeles, including Glendale, and 20,000 business members at the chamber. U.S. trade with Korea reached $82 billion in 2007, making Korea, which is the 10th-largest economy in the world, our 7th-largest trading partner. Last year, the United States and Korea signed a free trade agreement. The trade agreement includes the provisions specified in the bipartisan agreement, which address internationally-recognized standards and principles on labor and environment protection. That happened last May. The agreement is an economic stimulus package for much-needed boost in the local economy, as well as the nation's faltering economy. Two-way trade between the United States and Korea has doubled since 1990, reaching $82 billion in 2007. But so has the trade deficit between two nations more than quadrupled in the same period. The trade agreement is expected to result in a greater increase in U.S. exports to Korea by $11 billion compared to $6 billion for Korea, thus narrowing the deficit gap by $5 billion every year. The increase in exports to Korea is expected to happen across the full spectrum of U.S. sectors, from machinery, chemical, rubber, and plastic goods, to meat and dairy products, corn, fruit, vegetables, wearing apparel, and services. Korean drag investment in the United States is rapidly increasing, with the stock of investment reaching $16.7 billion in 2006. Hyundai manufacturing facility in Alabama, Kia manufacturing facility in Georgia, Samsung plant in Texas, generated new jobs and opportunities for the American people. According to a 2007 L.A. County Economic Development Report, Korea was the third-largest trading partner with $20.7 billion in L.A. County, and employs over 440,000 people in direct trade jobs. Southern Californians will benefit the most from this agreement, and I urge your support by approving the FTA resolution before you today, to send a strong message to our legislators to approve the CHORUS FTA. Thank you for listening on this important issue.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Herbert Milano is next, followed by Nancy Kent.
Good afternoon, Mayor Drayman, members of the city council and city staff. My name is Herbert Milano. I have two topics to bring up. One is procedural, the other one is substantive. The procedural one is a basic question, whether the original introduction to agendize this item followed proper Brown Act requirements with regard to notification to the public. Now, let me go to the substantive issues. Generally, anyone who studies the political economy finds that the nations that tend to grow generally have the biggest trade. The nations that are doing very, very poorly worldwide today are the nations that have very little trade. So trade in general has a significant positive effect to the overall economies of the countries that are involved. This particular free trade agreement that is coming basically about, well, over 10 years after the original NAFTA-American Free Trade Agreement, is significantly different because it comes at a time when the economy is in a severe downturn. We approved the original NAFTA agreement within Mexico and Canada when the economy was strong, and things are a little bit different now. And so if you are going to approve this for recommendation to the United States Congress, it is my assumption that you have, I would say, a stronger understanding of the impact, economic impact, that it will have on jobs in California, in Southern California. And I know that we have one degreed economist here, Mr. Najarian, and I would like to hear Mr. Najarian's opinion with regard to his evaluation of the trade agreement, and how it benefits the United States economy, particularly when it comes to the issues of jobs, and the issues that are now considered very important with regard to the requirements concerning the environment. I figure that if you cannot give us an intelligent answer with regard to this, maybe you guys are not ready to approve it. Thank you.
This is like school.
Just about.
There's a test.
Just about. Would you like to address that, or...
I do have some comments, and I'll make that after the speakers have concluded.
All right, thank you. The next speaker's Nancy Kent, and we'll watch the extra 30 seconds on the end there.
My name's Nancy Kent, I'm a resident of Glendale, and is this at a special afternoon meeting rather than the 6:00 PM meeting because the North American Free Trade Agreement is so unpopular, and the Korea-US Free Trade Agreement is similar to NAFTA? Next point. At the city event at the library last night during the presentation about the Irish, I heard the phrases "free trade" and "les fair government," and these terms were linked with man's inhumanity to man. But that event was about history. The current NAFTA-style agreements are not just les fair, they increase the power of multinational corporations and decrease the power of local, state, and federal elected officials to adopt regulations to protect public health, the environment, consumer rights, et cetera. These regulations can be passed, but then they are subject to NAFTA-style dispute resolution claims. Next point. Is a municipally-owned water and power company an unfair trade practice? Next point. I'm focusing on local sovereignty, so I will not dwell on things like Ford Motor Company and Chrysler are against this agreement because it doesn't go far enough to open up the Korea market for U.S. vehicles. That's for Congress to consider. Next point. If a Korean company wants to open a toxic waste dump in Glendale, you five should make the land use decisions, and if the company feels that you did a taking, this should be settled in the American court system, not by a NAFTA-style private arbitration panel. These private panels undermine our court system. A yes vote on what's proposed today means you support more NAFTA-style deals, but if you support protecting local decision-making, you'll change the resolution, so it's opposing the extension of NAFTA to additional countries. As we heard, you did this in 2001, also the National League of Cities did a resolution against the expansion of NAFTA in December 2001. Birthday would be an appropriate day to do a resolution opposing the expansion of NAFTA. The Sierra Club had an active national campaign in 2001 against the expansion of NAFTA because of the threat to environmental laws. These free trade agreements give foreign companies rights that domestic companies do not have. International trade is good, and Korean people are wonderful, but NAFTA-style agreements are not good for local sovereignty. Thank you.
Thank you, and I would also like to just, for the record, we were, so that it is a record, we were provided with comments called in by Les Hammer on March 31, and we are each in receipt of those comments. Okay, those are our speakers. I will go to my colleagues. Mr. Weaver, did you want to...
I don't mind.
Want to kick it off?
Sure.
Okay.
Well, out of a city of 207,000-plus population, I've got one or two emails that have opposed. I think the vast majority of people either don't care, or see no problem in doing it. Lived here all my life, and I remember way back when, decades ago, talk about Pacific Rim. The future of the West Coast was intimately tied to our partners on the other side of the Pacific Ocean, and that is a truism, more so now than ever before. You now hear all the time about global economy. We are totally tied to every country in the world, like it or not. As far as I'm concerned, the powers that be in Washington are going to work out the question of local sovereignty, because what happened with NAFTA 10 years ago, maybe it wasn't addressed at the time, it wasn't on the radar screen, we are putting it on the radar screen through our resolution to Washington, that local sovereignty must continue to exist. Certainly, the city attorney mentioned that the auto workers oppose because of the impact in Korea. The farm community supports it. Then you go over to Korea, and the carmakers over there love it, and the agricultural community of Korea doesn't want it. Again, during a global economy, the dust is going to settle, and things are going to work out. They've got to work together. It can be portrayed as being the worst thing ever, but if we don't move forward, in my view, in a global economy, realizing what the Pacific Rim means to all of us, we're sure changing ourselves in the future. So you go into a lot of details with the numbers, whatever, but along with the county of L.A., and our port, one of the highest-ranked ports in the United States in terms of imports and exports, I think we ought to move forward with recommending, only recommending, to the Congress, they look at that and consider that modification, giving us the autonomy that we need. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Else cared away?
Najarian.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think, first of all, it's important that we discuss this issue, because this is something that our United States Senate is going to take up with their duties of ratifying any treaties entered into by the executive branch, by the President. We certainly are not the decision-makers here in Glendale for the entire United States, but I think it's important that, for what value it has, that our senators, Boxter, Feinstein, do hear what we have to say. So I have no problem with taking up this issue. Secondly, I am in favor and do support the Free Trade Agreement with Korea. I am a student of economics, and as a student of economics, one of the first things that you learn to support, at least in a capitalist society, is that of a free market. And a free market works because those businesses, or those markets, or those countries that have the best ability to produce goods, whether they are endowed with capital, with technology, with brain power, or with labor, are able to produce those more efficiently, and sell them to other countries that do not have those resources. Protectionism is a downward spiral. Protectionism is a phase that the United States has gone through early in our history, and it was terribly unsuccessful. It harmed our economy immensely. I'm in favor of this, and not just because it's Korea, were it any other country, I would certainly support it, because we need to remove trade barriers. California stands ready, being on the Pacific Rim, to greatly expand our trade with Korea in several different areas. Number one is agriculture. The Korean geography is such where they rely heavily on importing agricultural goods, and everyone knows that California is probably the number-one producer of agricultural products. We are going to be able to expand the agricultural products, the exporting to Korea, by a great amount. That increase is going to directly affect the California economy. Currently, there are high tariffs and restrictions on the export of beef to Korea, and recently, those barriers to the market have begun to drop down. The United, and Koreans are healthy beefeaters, they love their beef. The United States is a huge beef producer. We stand to increase our exports to Korea, and help our local, our state, and our national economy by doing so. The increase of goods being bought by other countries will certainly help the dollar, and I don't need to tell everyone where the dollar is right now, and I don't need to tell everyone where the cost of oil is right now, and one of the number-one reasons that we hear for the barrel of oil being over $118, it might be $120 today, is because the U.S. dollar is so weak. While increasing our exports to other countries will strengthen the U.S. dollar, it will strengthen the U.S. economy. Let's talk about the political situation in Southeast Asia. Korea is one of our great allies. It's a great democracy in that area. I don't need to tell everyone what the big country is just to the north of them, and their explosive and their incredible increase in economic, political, and social influence throughout the area. We would be sorely amiss if we were to avoid and to pass up this ability to forge and further strengthen our ties with a great democracy such as Korea. Let's talk about films. Films right here in Glendale, we're talking Disney, we're talking DreamWorks. DreamWorks is here, many of you people are from DreamWorks. Our films currently have a tariff in Korea. With the onset of this free trade agreement and the lowering of the tariffs, guess what? More movies, more revenue, right in our backyard here in Glendale. So it has a direct impact on our economy. Now, if our auto workers and our auto manufacturers cannot compete with the Korean manufacturers, well, maybe that's what it was meant to be. Maybe they should be the ones focusing on the creation of the automobiles due to their labor costs, and we should focus our production on those industries that are more capital-intensive, that are more technology-intensive, that are more creatively-intensive, such as our movie industry. And we may see, and we have already seen, as mentioned by Mr. Lee, that in fact, many times, the manufacturing plants move from their overseas location into our country, and as an end result, create additional jobs in the U.S., such as we've seen with the German manufacturers, the Japanese manufacturers, as well as the Korean manufacturers, Hyundai and Kia. This is a great opportunity to increase production in our local industries that are competitive on a global basis, and tear down the barriers to free trade, and move our economy forward, and support the free trade and capitalism at its best. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Najarian. Mr. Quintero.
Okay, well, I see it differently. First of all, let me thank the Korean Chamber and the media that's here this afternoon. They do a great job, and we actually have a branch here in Glendale that had its first meeting last month, and I'm looking forward to working with... meeting last month, and I'm looking forward to working with them. I see these issues, all of them, NAFTA, CAFTA, and the rest of them, Colombia. I see them, number one, for individual cities, and we are city councilmembers, I see a loss of local control over land issues, as the city attorney stated. That's one of the reasons why the National League of Cities don't support these types of agreements. I also don't think these agreements are good for small- and medium-sized businesses, and they're absolutely not good for American workers. They're good for multinational corporations, there's no question about that, whether they're multinational corporations in Asia, the United States, or Europe, it works out real good for them. Now, to the issue of trade deficits, we have huge, and have had for many years, huge trade deficits with Japan. We have them now with China. And with Korea, there's a chart here that, starting in 2001, the US trade balance, that is, Korea sold $14 billion more goods to us than we sold to them, 2001. 2002, $14 billion. 3, $14 billion. 2004, $20 billion. 2005, $16 billion, almost $17 billion. 2006, $13, almost $14 billion. I don't think this agreement is going to change anything. I can, I think it will continue to be the same. And incidentally, as far as I know, we had trade surpluses, the United States had trade surpluses with Canada and Mexico prior to NAFTA. Since NAFTA, we've had trade deficits. We don't have free markets now, period. Across this globe, we don't have free markets, and we won't have free markets after this agreement. In terms of some of our own California industries, our intellectual properties are ripped off, whether it's DreamWorks products, or Disney, or Microsoft, whoever it is, they are ripped off by countries, and the governments in those countries do absolutely nothing to stop those intellectual ripoffs. So, all in all, I just don't see this, this as being in the best interest of Glendale citizens, American citizens in general, or, as I stated, small- or medium-sized American companies.
Thank you. Mr. Yuzafian. There's no one left but you and me, so...
Thank you.
And we'll say you go next, so...
I've been going back and forth on this issue, I will tell you that much. I was one of the councilmembers in 2001 who voted to keep our sovereignty in this city and also in this country against NAFTA. Some of the language that was there, we spent a lot of time discussing those issues. I didn't think I would do that, I was just a councilman, and this was the job of the Congress, not me, but nevertheless, I felt it was important for us to take a stand. That's why I'm happy that this section is spelled out in this resolution. There's a couple of reasons I am happy with this trade agreement, and I'm not so crazy about it. One issue is about rice. Yeah, I read my packet, unfortunately, to some people. Rice is one of those issues that is not covered in the free trade. Korea has decided that they're going to not allow California or anybody else import rice to their country due to the fact, and they basically said, "This is a cultural thing. It has to do with providing sustainability for themselves." So, they have a cultural heritage and mindset that they have to provide food for themselves. Hence, they are going to raise their rice themselves. They do not want people bringing in rice from outside. That was not a good thing, as I read that. I don't know, maybe we could use that excuse for not buying their vehicles and say, you know, Ford Motor Company started the plant in here, so it's our culture that we drive cars, so we shouldn't buy Hyundai's, although they seem to be better than some of the cars that are sold in here, and I hate to say that, but that's true. There are other positive things in there that I see. One of them has to do with the intellectual properties. There are specific guidelines there that the concessions have been made by the Korean government and also people who work in the Korean business in Korea, that they will honor the intellectual properties. They will honor our patents, they will honor our videotapes and movies and software and so on and so forth, which in some other countries, you just walk in, like China, you can buy the same DreamWorks CD/DVD for a buck, and in here, it sells for $15 or $20. Why? Because they can just go ahead and do it, and they don't have to follow any of the rules and regulations. And I don't kid myself, I'm pretty sure it happens in Asia very commonly, and some other countries that are not in the Asian Rim also, but this gives us an opportunity to deal with some of those things. In trade, there's negotiation. You give them something, you get something in return. So, I sat there and I looked at this, looked at the numbers, and went over all the stuff, and the only reason I'm going to vote for this is because that two sentences he added on, which basically talks to our representatives in Washington to say, "If you're going to approve this, make sure that local government does not lose their control." Because ultimately, the person in Washington is not going to be sitting in this room having to deal with the public when they come to us and say, "I don't want that plant out there spewing all these fumes." We're the ones who have to deal with it. So, I want to make sure that issue is raised. So, I'm glad the city attorney has put that in his resolution, and that's the only reason I will support this. But I will tell you, it's not as great as some people make it to be. It's not as bad as some other people make it to be either.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Yuzafian. Well, that's a good, your ending point is a good place for me to start. It's not as good as some people say, it's not as bad as some people say. I have a fundamental problem with us dealing with this at all. And I have a couple of questions I'd like to start with, that I'll address to the city attorney because they're sort of legal, quasi-legal or illegal. None of them tricky, so... But the first one is, we heard very recently in Councilmember Yuzafian's comments about intellectual properties. What is the legal mechanism, as spelled out, that will ensure the enforcement of that or allow enforcement of protection of intellectual properties?
Under the agreement as proposed, it would establish standards for protection and enforcement of a full, I shouldn't say full, but a broad range of intellectual property rights, copyright, patents, trademarks. The agreement provides for more, for what they would say, stronger or more comprehensive criminal penalties on customs enforcement, civil penalties for patent, copyright, or trademark infringement. So, there are provisions that spell that out. Whether or not the reality matches the language in the agreement is something that history will tell us.
That is my point. I was asking for legal mechanisms. You mentioned standards, provisions, and penalties.
Yes, sir.
That's very different than what is the, what is the true and sure mechanism for accomplishing this, and I think your last comment pretty well answered it. How it plays out is a question, and that's why I'm not moved by the comment that it is, because in a general term, we talk about policies and provisions and hopes and dreams, that that is going to be, that is going to dispel years of a mindset and practice that deals with, or has not dealt with, protection of intellectual properties, et cetera.
It does provide, if I may, Mr. Mayor, and again, this is not, certainly not a tremendous degree of solace to you, but it does provide for a commitment, again, another one of those weasel words, if you will, but it certainly, it provides for a commitment to continue to work to ensure adequate enforcement of the trademark, copyright, or patent, but again, as I pointed out, the reality is when the rubber meets the road, if this agreement is ratified, and then you're looking at enforcement procedures.
Right. This document embodies hopes. That's what it does, folks, and not a lot more. And it, remember that in our very fair city here, on issues that this city council actually has something to say about, we have standards, penalties, provisions, and all sorts of things that are almost impossible to enforce. May I mention Montrose Collection? Okay? And we've been dealing with that for how long now?
About a million years.
The other question, Mr. City Attorney, is discussion on city involvement in federal trade, in a federal trade bill. Obviously, this is not binding. I'm glad my, all my colleagues have pointed that out. I hope the folks at home understand that, and when they read about it in the paper, I think they get that. Our words don't go directly to the US Congress, and they go, "Oh, so you have Glendale's on board? Well, thank goodness. Now we can vote with confidence." If you wouldn't mind taking a second, Mr. City Attorney, and just so the folks at home understand what it is we're doing and why we're discussing this, because typically, they don't tune in to watch us dealing with federal trade bills.
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of council, the why question is probably better answered by the council itself. It is a matter of a federal, potential federal trade agreement that some would argue could have a positive or negative effect on local or regional, the local or regional economy, or even statewide economy. At times, this council has involved itself in addressing what I would call advisory measures to our state or federal government to indicate the position of the elected officials of the city of Glendale, either pro or con, relating to a federal or state issue. It's not often, but at the end of the day, it's really a policy issue of whether or not this council wants to get involved in providing essentially advice or the opinion of the collective wisdom of the city council, whether the federal government should take that into account in considering, in this case, for example, the ratification of a free trade agreement.
Because my institutional memory is short, we'll say that, what was the city's position? What was the council's position on the Patriot Act? And there were many people that came to this dais, asking this council to take a position on that. No, we didn't, we didn't. This council didn't...
I don't recall us taking a position...
And the reasons given, and the reasons that, at that time, those councilmembers were quoted, it was because, in essence, what does that have to do with us? That's not our issue. I would say, if we're not talking about those issues that really do affect us, why are we weighing in on a federal trade bill? Support for Corus FTA, I just want to, I want to just make my comment on a couple of things that various colleagues mentioned. I think you know where my vote will likely go, but I don't see it as either you support this or you are a protectionist. Because you tack the words "free trade" onto something, and I say this as someone who represented small business for a number of years, because you tack the words "free trade" onto something, it doesn't make it free trade. You can tack the words "new and improved" onto a lot of things, it doesn't make it so. This is managed trade. It's just a different form of managed trade. It's surprising to me that, to find out, the future of the US dollar seems to hang in the balance, what the Glendale City Council is going to do here today. If you understand economics, you also understand that what the US dollar does with respect to other international currencies, et cetera, is cyclical, and it's involved in a lot of different issues. What we here do today certainly is not going to affect the US dollar. The fate of the film industry does not hang in the balance, and neither does, and even if it did, as we've discovered, there's very little we're going to be able to do about that. There will be provisions, penalties, standards, and a lot of shouting in the wind, just like it is with countries where we do have long-established trade practices. And lastly, several of my colleagues have mentioned the auto industry, and I'm stunned to find out the fate of the auto industry is in my hands as well. I don't mean to be overly glib, and I realize I am being to some degree, I just don't think we, I don't think this is our purview. Usually, when, as a citizen, I go to the ballot box on issues that are related to federal matters, I usually want to hear from the experts who know about federal matters. I'm interested in my friends' opinions and my family's opinions, my colleagues' opinions, but I'm really interested in people who have the ability to look at these issues and analyze them and provide me some input. I just don't think we're that body. I think we do great work on a lot of local issues, I just don't think this is one of them. So, I will take the call to roll in a minute, but I think clearly you know where I'm going to go on this. And I think Mr. Yuzafian's comment about the rice issue points that out, and I, had you not made the mention of the analogy to the automobile industry, I would have done it, because we could say that in the United States, we have, we are a car culture, more than any other place on this planet. But, you know, do we protect that? Do we not protect that? I have my opinions, but I just, I don't think I was elected to make those kinds of judgments, personally, so... Anyhow, Mr. Yuzafian.
May I make one comment?
Of course.
And I agree with most of your comments to an extent. It is an advisory vote, but it has been my experience, when you send a resolution to Congress in a positive mode, they have a tendency to read the positive part of it and see what else is there. Part of my intention is, in the resolution is the issues that is very near and dear our heart, and that's local control, and I want them to read that. When you say you're just against it, they just file it, and they never read the next sentence. So, this will give an opportunity for our leaders in Washington to keep that in mind. This happened with NAFTA, now it's happening with this one. This is one of those items that you should give extra attention to, and whether it's Colombia or whatever else it is, they need to pay attention to because they're starting to get a lot of people against this type of treaties because of that little section there that takes your sovereignty away, and it's no different, I'm pretty sure somebody in Korea will not like that section either, and they want their sovereignty too. It's their own country too. So, that's why I think it's important to send that out. It's just a message. In the end of the day, the Congress may decide not to ratify it. I don't know what they're going to do.
Mr. Yuzafian?
I think that, I think the council has set a precedent previously in discussing issues of not just the state, national, but a global, a global impact. When we talk about our LEEDs standards, we're talking about setting standards that will prevent global warming, that will prevent destruction of the entire Earth's ozone. Yes, we are just a small part, and Glendale's ratification or denial of those LEED certificates and LEED standards isn't going to make the hole in the ozone disappear or heal itself. But, you know, when we talk about thinking globally, especially on today, of All Day's Earth Day, it means that everyone needs to look a little bit further than their own backyard and look globally. I don't have a problem in dealing with certain issues. We've discussed genocide, we've discussed DARF issues. Some issues perhaps we have stayed away from, but I personally don't have a problem sending an advisory opinion to whichever body ultimately makes the decision.
Okay. Anyone else? I would just add that, for my response to that, is simply that LEEDs issues, genocide issues, and other issues that come from large segments of our local constituency are different. There is no large impetus from our constituency about this or to place, even place this on the agenda, and that's why I draw a distinction. I think you are absolutely right, and I do agree with you, that there are certainly things this council's weighed in on that do have a, have had a, or are of a global nature and a national, play on the national level as well, but certainly there are others that large segments of our constituency have also asked about, that we've simply said, "No, it's not our jurisdiction." Certainly, LEEDs and genocide, though, came from a large, impetus from a large section of our constituency. Mr. Weaver?
I don't know what you can say, "large," I'm not trying to say that, but there are over 13,000...
I'm not trying to say that, but there are over 13,000 Koreans in Glendale, and there is a Korean Chamber of Commerce in Glendale now, so--
That's a--
You know, where you make proportions, I don't know.
It's a good point, but the numbers I've read in terms of the polling data done is that there is quite a disparate number between the Korean population and the people supporting this particular issue.
I haven't read it.
And those are the statistics that are presented nationally, anyway.
Well, you know, I want to make the point, let's not make this a Korean-American issue. These are Korean-Americans in front of us today. I'm sure their American citizens are on their way, so we're talking about a foreign country, Korea, like we talk about other foreign countries, and what type of deal is the American citizen, the American worker, going to get, vis-à-vis other workers in other parts of the world? And my opinion is, and I've worked on these issues, as a matter of fact, let me say, that I worked with all of the people who were laid off at the GM and Ford plants at Southgate and Pico Rivera, then I came up here to Glendale and worked with all of the layoffs at the Lockheed Corporation. I worked with people from ITT, right here in Glendale, on Western or Sonora. That entire factory was moved down to Mexico. Some of the workers that worked here, it happened to be original Mexicans, went down there to train some of the workers, who were paid, I would estimate, about a quarter of what the Glendale workers were making. So to say that these type of agreements are good for America and good for the working class of this country, that is absolute, the statistics all show that is not the case. Medium and small businesses, the statistics show that is not the case. If it's better for multinational corporations, and that's what your interest is, then fine, but anyway.
Okay. Do we, yes, Mr.--
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I forgot. Mr. Milano raised a procedural question when he first came up about the issue of the Brown Act. I'm not certain what point he was driving at. The item is properly and was properly on the agenda for today. If the implication is that somehow a majority or more of this council got together and discussed putting it on the agenda, that is incorrect. It was, as I noted in the report and touched on briefly this afternoon, the representative of the Korean-American Chamber of Commerce submitted a letter directly to then-Mayor Najarian in January, and it was then referred to me. I then contacted Mayor Najarian, and he indicated we need to put this on the agenda for discussion, thinking initially, I believe it was just a resolution that the mayor could sign, and indicated that I need to put together a report and put it on the agenda. So it was nothing more sinister than essentially consulting with the mayor to make sure that we knew what we were going to do and getting it on the agenda.
All right. Well, thank you for making a record of how sinister we are not, or are. And, Mr., unless there's anything else, I'd like to thank my colleagues for the very vigorous debate, and ask Mr. Kasakian to call the roll.
Councilmembers Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
No.
Weaver?
Hi.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Draymond?
No. Okay. I want to, yes, it does pass, and I want to thank you all again and thank the public for weighing in.
Move to adjourn for council?
Second.
Okay. We are adjourned. We need to move the house in, please.